Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you guys for being here. Today is May, um, May fourth, third, third, fourth, yeah, third, isn't it? I got my days mixed up. May third, um, two thousand twenty-two. So again, thank y'all for being here. We getting ready to open up tonight without, this evening with our work session. I'm gonna go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. And I'm gonna ask if, I'm gonna ask if Commissioner Cowan will give us our prayer tonight. And I'm gonna ask Commissioner Edwards if he would lead us in our pledge tonight. Commissioner Cowan.
Father, we thank you, dear Lord, for the blessings you've given us, Lord, here. Lord, we thank you for our county. We pray, God, that you continue to bless it. We pray, God, you give us wisdom as we make decisions here. Lord, we just ask you to, um, watch over us here, Lord, God. Give us wisdom. Help us make these right soon, Lord. Lord, we just thank you for your grace and mercy. Pray that you forgive us of our sins. We ask all this in Christ's name.
Amen. Commissioner Edwards. Um, again, thank you guys for being here today. We're gonna have our, uh, start our work session on, um, our, uh, facilities, our community centers. Turn it over now to our county manager. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Facilities Management Policy and Procedure Work Session. So I had an opportunity to do a ride along with our Facilities Director and our Assistant Director, and they gave me a tour of all of our community centers. This was my way of getting to know the county. In my role, I did ask general questions, and I also found out that we needed uniformity amongst all of our community centers. I also asked if we had policies and procedures in place, and I thought it would be best for us to develop a draft policy and procedures and have a work session here today to discuss some matters. Today, I have our Director Jason Johnson, our Facilities Director. He will discuss our facilities, as well as our County Attorney will discuss a proposed policy. Our objective here today is to ensure uniformity and also making sure that the county is always protected. We'll go ahead and start with our Director, Mr. Johnson.
All right, so, uh, in total, I want to talk to you tonight about seven, uh, different, uh, county facilities. All of them are county facilities. Not all of them are community centers by name. Uh, but I think as we go through, um, the slides tonight, you'll see these, uh, facilities operate very similarly. And, uh, and I think they'll make sense by the end of this, uh, presentation. This policy, um, that the county, uh, manager is trying to, uh, use, I do think will help us, um, or create, well, I do think will help us protect the county. I think it'll help us protect the facility contacts that are responsible for our facilities, and I think it'll also protect the end users. So, uh, as Mr. Sims has already said, we, we did go out. He had some questions about our county facilities, how often we were in them. We are in them quite often, doing maintenance requests, uh, as, as they come in. Uh, the facility contacts will notify us, and we go out and do, um, uh, those repairs. Uh, I will tell you that my department is just responsible for the maintenance. We don't collect any fees. We don't schedule any events. We don't, uh, even know what the schedules are, uh, out there. Or I, I also don't know the amount of the fees that, uh, our different, uh, community centers, um, may, uh, use or not use. So, um, he asked us if we would, um, create a facility inspection report. We do go out annually, uh, with, uh, the corresponding fire stations, whether it be the city of Covington or Newton County, when they complete their annual inspections, we're with them there. Some of the facilities require us to go out semi-annually, um, when they have, uh, commercial hood vent systems. Those facilities like Washington Street, Nelson Heights Community Center. And, uh, of course, we are in them on a very regular basis. The facility inspection report that we generated, I have a copy here. Um, I didn't make copies for you guys. I didn't know if you would find it interesting or not. I'd be glad to make you copies and email them to you. But we covered, uh, all, uh, aspects of the facilities. Uh, emergency lighting, uh, emergency preparedness. You may say, what is that? That's making sure our stairways, if they have them, our hallways, uh, are clear from obstruction. So if we did have an event happen there, um, uh, people would be safe to exit those facilities. We also make sure our fire alarm compan, uh, panels are working properly, if they have, uh, those, uh, type of devices there. And of course, if any flammable materials are stored, are properly stored. So that's your emergency preparedness. We also did fire extinguishers, housekeeping, electrical, uh, security. Uh, we covered building exterior and inter, interior grounds, and then the parking, uh, lot. I will tell you that all of the facilities that we're talking about tonight are all compliant, uh, uh, with life safety measures. And most of the issues that we found and noted were cosmetic in nature, just due to everyday wear and tear and the use of, uh, our facilities. So let me start you off, uh, with Almond Community Center. It's located, um, on a point three, four acres. Uh, it is mostly used for rentals. And what I mean by that is we don't have, uh, entity or an organization that rents this on a regular basis. It is managed by a community volunteer, facility contact. His name is Chuck Berry. And he handles all the schedules, um, the events that happen there and collects any fees, um, that are applicable there. Uh, this facility, uh, up until this year was a voting precinct, and they have since moved that to Newton Baptist Church, but just because of the size of the building. Didn't have anything to do, uh, with the facility itself, other than just size. It was built nineteen sixty, has a max capacity of a hundred and fifteen people. Um, that is Almond Community Center. Um, and you guys, if you have questions about a particular community center as we go along, if you want to interrupt me, I'm fine with that, or we have a time at the end where you can ask me, uh, questions. This is the Timothy K. Adams Historic Ban Room. It's, uh, recently been renovated. Um, currently, there are no lease agreements, um, for this facility. It is managed by, uh, Ms. Terry James. And, uh, she schedules all the events, the fees that are applicable and stuff like that. It was built, uh, in nineteen fifty-seven, and, uh, it is part of the Cousins Center. The next facility is Gum Creek. Now Gum Creek is, uh, one of our least-used facilities. Uh, it's a very isolated facility out on the north end of Newton County. It sits on almost five acres there. It's built in nineteen ninety-one. The sign you see in front of Gum Creek, um, it was, until this year, uh, used as a voting precinct. Again, due to size, um, they have moved those voters over to the church at Covington. And I have spoken to, uh, Ms. Angela Davis, um, about Almond and about Gum Creek. And she does not think that, um, they would ever utilize these facilities again as voting precincts. So I included this facility because, um, really, that was the only thing that has ever happened out there, except from time to time, we would have homeowner association contact the B O C, and we coordinated through the chairman's office, and they would use it, uh, for their homeowner association meetings. But even then, um, that's been in, in, uh, years past, and we haven't had even any of those requests recently. My department, I guess you would say, um, maintains this facility, uh, and, and would be the facility contact right now. We go out about once a month, just to check on it, make sure it is very isolated out there. That the H V A C is, is working. Um, it has a well system. And so, um, uh, it operates off a well, so we have to do well maintenance from time to time. Uh, we did not worry about this facility as much, uh, when the recycle center was up and running next to it, because there was always activity there. But since that has, has, uh, been shut down, we find ourselves out there at Gum Creek, um, pretty regular. We, uh, winterize it, uh, during the winter, just because it is so isolated. It's a very nice facility. Um, ni, it's built in nineteen ninety-one. It's twelve hundred and eighty square feet, and then it's got a max capacity of, uh, sixty-five people. Our next facility is the Mansfield Community Center. It is, was built in nineteen seventy-three, sits on one point two-six acres. And we have an intergovernmental agreement with Newton County and the City of Mansfield on file in the clerk's office. And so they, um, use this as a voting, uh, polling precinct. They also have their council meetings there, and then our contact is Julius Hayes. Um, he, he and the City of Mansfield schedule all the events associated with the facility. Um, they collect fees, that sort of thing. I will tell you that I met with Julius this week, and the City of Mansfield would like to do an improvement on this facility. So if you look at the picture, um, we took a, uh, this is the front entrance. All of our, um, facilities are handicap accessible, meaning that they have to have a level entry into one doorway, doesn't specify what doorway that has to be. So, um, in the case of Almond, you saw the picture in Almond, we have a ramp in the back, um, in parking in the back, and they can roll up to the, the rear door, uh, right there, and that's the main door that's used at Almond anyway. In this facility, they also have a rear ramp. It's a concrete ramp, rolls up to the back door, and, uh, it is wheelchair accessible. So what the city would like to do, at their own expense, is repore the porch, let, make it level with the door opening there. They would have to rework the columns as well as the steps, and then would locate a ramp over to the far right side of the facility, so it'd be more handicap accessible. And I think it would be a very, uh, worthwhile project for us to let them do that, at, again, at their expense, and I think it would improve the, the looks of the, the front of the facility. They also want to do some work in the flower beds and, and kind of just beautify the front of their facility. So that is Mansfield. Um, it, it, if, if you, none of the, um, community centers, um, I've mentioned so far, have any real amenities to them. I did list a few in my notes here. This has a very nice feel to the left side of the picture. I couldn't get it all in. They sometimes have events out there where they'll have outside vendors. They'll use that for overflow parking and things like that. Our next community center is Nelson Heights Community Center. It sits on eleven point two-nine acres. It's a very nice, uh, community center, has a lot of amenities with it. You may see the pavilion there to, just to the right, uh, in your picture. It also has a playground, uh, basketball courts and ball fields. It's thirty-six hundred square feet, has a maximum capacity of a hundred and fifteen people. Uh, this facility is leased to Nelson Heights Community Services Incorporated. It is managed by Anthony Henderson. He's a facility contact. And, uh, they schedule all of their events, collect any fees if it's applicable, um, with that facility. And again, we do all the major and, uh, some minor maintenance requests, uh, when they ask us to do that. So that is Nelson Heights, Washington Street. It's currently under renovation. Uh, it's one of our bigger, um, facilities. Sixty-three hundred and sixteen square feet. Its max capacity is two hundred and forty-three people. Does have a basketball out, uh, court outside its exterior, has a storage trailer. And part of the renovation, um, uh, that you guys agreed to, we will add an outdoor classroom onto the backside. And I think it'll, it'll be very, uh, nice for the students that, that occupy that place there. It's built in nineteen fifty-four. It's managed by, uh, Ms. B. Jackson, and it's leased to the Washington Street Community Center Incorporated. And that lease is on file in our clerk's office, and again, Ms. B. would handle all the fees, the schedules, the events. The last facility I want to show you is an overview of the Cousins Center. And I thought it was important to include this as one of our facilities, and, um, although it's not been named a community center. The TK Adams Ban Room does sit on this property. It's a pretty big piece of property. It's twenty-seven point four acres. In total, it's seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two square feet. It was built in nineteen, uh, fifty-seven. And the list of, um, people that call this place home, I'll go down that list here in just a minute. I tried to label them where they're located in the building itself. But this is home to the Newton County, uh, Community Partnership. That's Ms. Laura Bertram. The Department of Juvenile Justice. The City of Covington Police Department rents a area for storage over there. Uh, that's CASA is located there. Uh, Department of Driver Services, Keep Newton Beautiful, has office spaces there. Historical Society has a storage area there. And then our emergency management offices operate out of this facility. And the reason I bring, uh, these offices to your attention is, um, I were, was not able to find, I know at one point the county was working on lease agreements with these different departments. Um, and those departments would be, uh, departments like Juvenile Justice, uh, CASA, D D S. Those are outside, um, agencies that operate outside the county in a sense. Um, our county departments, we wouldn't require them to have a lease, uh, of any kind. But I wanted to make you aware, since we were talking about, uh, public use facilities and rental of facilities, I am not able to currently find, uh, if we have lease agreements with these departments or not. I do know we do maintenance over there. I will tell you also that the rec department, uh, handles the gym and the associated ball fields. And, uh, we do provide pest control services and landscape, uh, services over there. The areas that are not labeled in red on your screen or on the big screen, those are vacant areas. And that's why, another reason I wanted to include it, in case we decided to, uh, use those areas for, um, any type of public gathering. Uh, we, there would have to be some work that would go into, uh, those spaces to get them ready for the public to use. But they are vacant spaces currently right now. There, there are some storage, um, there are some departments that have some loose storage in there, doesn't have to be really secure. But for the most part, um, the cafeteria, the, uh, kitchen area, and then, uh, the area behind CASA, as well as the, both of those middle section in between, I guess would be the best way to say that. They're vacant. They're just vacant classrooms. And, and so, uh, we would have to make some improvements, uh, with H V A C, paint, you know, cosmetic things, if we wanted to try to use that facility in a different way. But currently, they're vacant. That is all of the facilities that, that, um, we visited and toured. Um, we did complete reports on, um, the fil, the facilities that are in the picture there that are our community centers. And so I will turn it back over to you guys and stay here and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, sir. I'm gonna let, uh, the county attorney go ahead and present. Thank you, Jason.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here tonight. So after, um, I spoke with Mr. Sims, the county manager, interim county manager, about the facilities, the question was asked of me, what's the county's policy for dealing with these community centers? And sadly, there isn't one. And so what I'm gonna present to you tonight, for purpose of discussion, is a proposed policy that, that I have drafted that will inform everyone involved in how these facilities are to be utilized and managed in the future. Now, it's not a policy until this board adopts the policy, and this proposal is not, um, in any way, shape, or form intended to be the gospel. If you, if there's things that you want to change, we certainly will address those. If there's issues that need to be addressed, we will certainly address them. But I will say this. Of all the local governments I've, I have worked with and represented in my past, I've never worked with or represented one that had no policy with respect to county facilities. And it appears that you have no policy, and that's not a good place to be. You need a policy. And the policy I've drafted is very, um, I'll say it's very bare bones. It's very minimalist. The primary intent is to create uniformity, so that every one of these different buildings operates, as far as the county is concerned, the same way. Now, clearly, what happens within each one of these facilities is different. What happens here is different than what happens here, but the manner in which the county's relationship with both the facility and the operator of that facility, that needs to be uniform. We, everyone needs to know that each facility is being treated the same, each facility is being held to the same rules, regulations, and each facility has the same relationship with the county. So with that said, I'm just gonna jump in, and I'm just gonna go through each page. It's a very short policy. I think it's five pages, and sort of hit on the high notes of what the intent of the policy is, and then leave it with you either for discussion tonight or discussion with me in, in another time. So on page one, uh, is where we put definitions. And we tried to make this as user-friendly of a policy as we could. There are three, uh, definitions I want to sort of direct your attention to. Uh, the first one is community facility lease. What this county needs is for each one of these com, community centers that is occupied or run by a third party, we need a lease. We need a lease agreement that grants to them possession and defines everybody's respective rights and obligations. And there are some lease agreements for some of the facilities, but not for all of the facilities. You need one for every facility that you have. And my recommendation is going to be that there be one lease agreement that is the same for every one of the facilities. Now, there will be some special things in each one of them that will differ, and that'll be the purpose of the lease or the activities that are authorized within the facility. But the lease, the body of the lease needs to be uniform for everybody. And that's, uh, the definition, uh, is the community lease agreement, which is a written lease agreement in the form and substance that you will ultimately approve. It's not attached to this one, but we have one that we're cleaning up, and we'll get it to all of you for review as well. The next thing, the next definition that I think is important is the community facility rental form. So the lease will be the relationship between the county and whoever operates the facility. The community facility written form will be the thing by which each facility operator can rent the facility out to third parties. So it has been asked of me, uh, who decides who gets to use the facility? You know, a lot of times, facilities might rent themselves out for a family reunion, or a wedding, or some other fundraising event. And I don't, it's not our intent, it's not my intent in drafting this policy to put an end to any of those things. It's my intent in this to, uh, once again, make it uniform. Make the same set of rules and obligations apply, and this center is applying that center and applying that center. And make it clear to everybody that these are the rules and the regulations. And the next one on the definition page, I want to point your attention to, attention to is facility operator. And the only reason I've identified that is it is my recommendation that if you are going to have a third party operating any of, any of these facilities, they must be, they should be a registered and active nonprofit organization. You should not be leasing these out to individuals to operate. You should not be leasing these out to for-profit enterprises to operate. And so I just wanted to make it clear within the definition sta, section. The next page, um, is where the policy itself begins. And the policy is written a little bit backwards, and that, that's, that was intentional. I, I, I don't know that I can explain the reason it was written intentionally backwards, but we, we, we addressed first the third-party rentals. The rentals from the facility operator to third-party users. And it's A, B, C, and D are the, it's A, B, C, D, E, F, G are the various sections. And I'm gonna walk through them really quickly and just give you sort of a thirty-thousand-foot-up-in-the-air view of what they are. Uh, Section A tells, uh, tells the world who to you go to if you want to rent one of these facilities for the day, for the weekend. And it basically says, you go, you go to the facility operator, if there is an operator at the facility. If there is not one, you go directly to the county. And then we, we installed some rules and regulations, and, and I realized, as I was reviewing this today, one of them is duplicated. Um, it, it's, we would not allow any alcohols, alcohol, drugs, or firearms in any of these facilities. Uh, the next one is paragraph C. The way we envision this working is that the facility operator receives the application for the use, submits that application for use to the county, and the county would designate someone, either your facilities manager, or someone from the county manager staff, to approve the potential use. And so the county would ultimately have the authority to permit or reject the use of the community facility. And it will always be, uh, the use of the facilities must be for some public or charitable purpose, not for profit. So you can't rent it to Avon to go do a big Avon sale. But you could rent it to a family reunion group. You could rent it to a family conducting a wedding. You could rent, rent it to a nonprofit to try to generate money for their so, other, uh, nonprofit. The next section, Section E, um, limits the use only during business hours. Now, business hours may be different depending on what the facility is. You may have some facilities that are strictly nine to five. You have mu, some facilities that may be after-hours evening because they deal with youth after-school programs, or maybe even weekend programs. And so I think that the business hours will vary from facility to facility. But we want to make sure that we're keeping the potential rental use within the existing hours of operation of the facility. I have been asked on multiple occasions how much it costs to rent these facilities, and I have no idea. And so I think if, if we don't know how much it costs to rent these facilities, we should establish a fee schedule. And this fee schedule, I think, would be different depending on the facility and depending on the amenities of the facility, the size of the facility, and, and probably the capacity of the facility. And I haven't been advancing the page. I'm sorry. And you can, you'll see in the top third of that page, there is a spreadsheet where I listed the five facility buildings that we addressed, and it sounds like I missed one that we'll go back and add. But we specified, we want to put the maximum capacity and what that, what that daily rental fee is. And then we listed an amount to be payable to the county. Now, my thought was, some nominal amount of the rental rate should go to the county, because the county is ultimately responsible for these facilities. And I don't know how much that should be. I think that's gonna be left up to y'all. Not that, not enough money to discourage people to do it, but just enough money so that we have a dog in the fight. Maybe five percent, ten percent, something like that. And then we threw in some, what we called other prohibitions, and these are kind of the easy things that, that, um, you know, you can't do anything illegal in, in any of the facilities. They, the third-party users, the person that rents it for the weekend, can't alter the structure. They can't nail things up to the wall. They can't partition off walls or bust down doors. And lastly, the third-party user can't turn around and get a fourth-party user. You can't sub-sublet it. Um, and lastly, we require that whoever enters into that rental agreement must be at least twenty-one years of age. You don't want to, you don't want a seventeen-year-old kid coming in and trying to rent the facility for the day because they lack the capacity to enter into a lawful contract. We don't want to get into all of that. So the next section, which begins with Section Two, are the facility, facility operator obligations and restrictions. And these are the, this is the section that deals with the entity that's running that facility. So, so under A, we want that facility to be a nonprofit. We want it to be a registered, active nonprofit, nonprofit organization. I would recommend that you require of these nonprofits annual reporting. Annual reporting of their revenues and expenses, so that you know the viability of these nonprofit organizations. Now, obviously, no nonprofit makes a profit. That's the reason they're nonprofit. And you're not looking to see, are they giant money-raising entities? But are they, are they substantial enough and competent and capable enough from a financial standpoint to do what they tell us they're doing in that facility? Next, we have a section of temporary seasonal subletting. This kind of relates back to the previous section. This authorizes the facility operator to temporarily sublet the premises. So we're not gonna prohibit them from temporarily subletting them. We're gonna authorize them to do that. We have limited the time, and we may be overly generous, and I think it's something that we'll talk about again as we work through this policy. We limited it to no more than a week at a time, and that may be too much. Maybe it needs to be two days or three days, and I think that's gonna be something that this board is gonna have to decide. I think it's, uh, probably not enough to say one day at a time, because you could very well have a weekend event. Um, it feels to me like maybe a week's too long, but that's just one of those soft decisions that this board will have to make. The next section, under paragraph E, are the things that we do not want the facility operators to do while they are occupying the county property. The first one is installing, constructing, or otherwise placing equipment, furnitures, fixtures, or in the facility. We don't want them building anything permanent in the facility. We've got facility, facilities maintenance. We want all of that to go through us, through the county. The next thing, which we've repeated a couple of times, we don't want any of the facility operators to use or authorize themselves or any third parties. operators to use or authorize themselves or any third parties to use alcohol, drugs, or firearms within the facilities. And we expect the facility operator to engage in some self-policing, some policing around the facility to make sure that's happening. To the extent the facility operator authorizes third-party users, in addition to our policy, we would expect that that, that those users comply with all applicable law. Whatever county regulations exist, if it's in a city, whatever city regulations exist, they, they should be making sure they're meeting all the applicable codes. And lastly, and to me, this may be the most important section, it's sort of by itself on this last page is paragraph F, community facility lease agreement. I recommend, I cannot recommend to you any, any stronger than I make this recommendation. Every facility needs a written lease, and those leases should be uniform. Doesn't mean exactly what they're allowed to do is the same, because that just isn't the case, but the basic form of the lease should be the same for everybody. There are a couple of leases, those leases differ. Those leases are just different enough that one or the other of those leaseholders might think they're getting a better or worse deal than the other guy, and that's not appropriate. I think it's appropriate that every lease be the same. We've also put a, a time limit in it, and I'm gonna explain the reason this is in there, but my recommendation is that these leases be for 12 months at a time. They be for one year at a time, and they have to come back to this board for approval each year. And the reason for that is, is a lot of reasons. One is, there is a Georgia constitutional prohibition against entering into multi-year agreements. Arguably, possibly, there's a million exceptions. There, it's like every other rule, that is the rule, but there are a million exceptions to that rule. And rather than having to carve an exception for these leases, it's a lot easier, a lot more practical to have them be 12-month leases, and that way, the facility operators are back in front of you each year renewing their lease. And if you find that your facility is not being put to appropriate use, you could, you could reject the lease and move on to somebody else. So that's what the policy is. The thing I want the board to remember, above and beyond everything else, is these are county facilities. These are government-owned buildings. And in the course of the past month, or six weeks, or two months that I've been working with Mr. Sims and his staff on this, the frequent and recurring answer to questions that were raised about the physical structure, the occupants, and the activities was, I don't know. Nobody knew who, what, where, when, or how. And that, for government-owned property, that's an unacceptable answer. And that, this policy is intended to make sure that that never happens again. So it's, you all have this, and I will send it to you in whatever format you want. It is my recommendation that we discuss and adopt this policy or a policy like it. And I know that Mr. Sims and his staff, I think they still have some review to do it to ensure that we're meeting all of their recommendations and all of their needs. But I wanted to put this to you, make sure you had an opportunity to provide feedback and ask questions. But I, I would urge you, in the strongest possible terms, to get control, take control of these facilities. I think it's a great thing in Newton County that you've got these nonprofit civic-based organizations that are willing to step up and fill the void. The county government just doesn't have those services, and I think it's outstanding and wonderful that you've got community organizations willing to fill those gaps. But what we're lacking is a clear, uniform, consistent policy about how they do it, and I would urge you to adopt that. So I'm happy to take any questions now. If you have questions in the future, I'm happy to, happy to take phone calls, emails, or meet with any of you.
Thank you, sir. Guys, any questions? Oh. You got Commissioner Cowan and Dem. Go ahead, sir.
Just, um, I may have missed this.
Hey, can you cut your mic on, please? Thank you.
Okay, I may, I may have missed this, we have already discussed it, but who approves these permit applications for one-day use?
So I didn't specify who. It would be my recommendation that, that the, sort of, are you talking about the third-party user? Not that they go to the board, because that just takes too much time. My recommendation would be that, that the county manager appoints someone, maybe your facilities management, or, you know...
So that, that would be for the short-term?
That's right, for the short-term, weekend user.
The long-term, or the people that use it, all around, that would be a part of their one-year agreement?
That's right, they come to you. That, this board would approve those lease agreements.
The next question I had was, the fees are based on, you mentioned something about a fee schedule. Is it gonna be based on square footage?
So, I think it should be based on all the things that the market would base it on. So maybe square footage is a component of it, maybe functionality, maybe how good a condition it is, you know, I think. And, and that's one I think is gonna take a little bit of work with your facilities management staff to kind of evaluate what, what ought to be that range. I mean, you could have a very large facility that's just not very functionally usable, and maybe that doesn't need a really high rate.
Well, I think the facilities that receive appropriations, that can be factored into their cost of what you're giving them.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they're not having to pay a lease every, every month, but that can be factored in there as part of their operation expense.
And, and I want to make sure I'm clear, the purpose of having a fee schedule is not really to generate revenue. It's to just make sure that there's, that everybody's got a little skin in the game. If I'm gonna borrow, if I'm gonna use that facility for the weekend, I ought to have to pay a little something for it. And that just is gonna make sure that I, you know, I respect the facility, and I've got it, I've made an investment, even if it's just for two days. So I, I, I think, I don't want to say it's a symbolic fee, fee payment, but it's a, it's a relatively nominal fee payment. It's not going to be, it's not gonna be what you're gonna pay for a ballroom at the hotel, right?
Right. And the last one, I guess, is for Jarvis. Maybe have some signs put on these buildings about how to contact somebody for the rental. I didn't know the Almond Community Center was a county-owned building.
We can do that, sir.
It's just, just, I don't want nothing big, but I just think something small, like contact this person if they want, might be a good thing. And let's see.
I got J.C. next.
That's it, that's all I got.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you. I had two questions. I mean, first one is, is would the Gaithers Plantation, would that fall on this too as well? Because I know people, they do go out and, and lease that, and I know that for a fact, you and my, with my objections, they do serve and sell alcohol. I mean, that's allow alcohol, I'm, rephrase myself, allow alcohol. So would that change their policy, or would that just, would that be an exception as far as alcoholic beverages and stuff like that?
So this policy is really addressed at facilities that other people operate, and since the county operates Gaithers, I did not necessarily include it here, but it certainly could be included. But, I mean, we, what we try to do is distinguish between county-operated facilities and facilities that are operated by third parties.
Well, maybe I'm just blind, but I can't see one facility different from the others. And I think it's an excellent idea. But the process that we used to be, it was that if you wanted to rent a facility in the county, you had to go to up in, I want to say personnel up there with Ms. Henderson, and you would talk to her, and then you, she would accept your cash, and then she would notify the person in charge of that facility that, that it would be leased out for a certain date. The problem with that, they would lease it out, people would kind of know, they wouldn't tear it up or anything, but, but it had to be clean, it was kind of stuck with the person operating it. So if we go into something similar that, make sure that Mr. Jason could have somebody to clean it after it has been leased out.
I think that's a great point, and maybe the way to deal with that would be require a specific cleaning fee for every one of those users, and that way, at the end of the facility, or at the end of the, and that cleaning fee would be payable to the county at the end of the event, Jason's staff could go out and clean up. And, and maybe even have a deposit requirement. Now, I'd like to see...
Absolutely.
I'd like it to be a reasonable policy, a deposit, but I think that would make sense too. That's a good point.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Just want to make sure we, if, if we're gonna require Jason to clean it, does the rental fee go to the county?
Yes, I think we would have a specific cleaning fee. And, and I think maybe that would be Jason's staff would, or his, Jason would have to go tell us, here's what it's gonna cost me to clean this facility on a Sunday night at the end of the thing, give us what that actual cost is, and we, and that would probably differ depending on the size of the facility. And I think we would also get a deposit in case somebody just leaves it a wreck. You know, they gotta bring in a, I don't know, they gotta repaint a wall or something. We want to be able to draw the cost of that out of the facility. But that cleaning fee would go to the county, yes.
Commissioner Sanders.
Patrick, would this be sent to us so we can review in a...
Yes, yes.
And my, my next question, you had an actual time limit on a yearly basis where they come before the county.
Yes.
So the ones that are already in place that have leases, are they gonna be grandfathered in, because that's not in their lease?
So I would recommend no. Those, all of those leases do have termination provisions. So it would be my recommendation that we terminate those leases and start afresh and anew with everybody. That would be my recommendation.
So my recommendation, or my suggestion, would be if you're going to, for instance, if somebody comes before the county and their lease is not renewed, that there's actually stipulations or some guideline or something that's listing and saying, why, what can stop you from getting this lease renewed? Because what's gonna happen is we're gonna have issues, especially if somebody's been in that property for a certain amount of years, and they come before the county, and we don't renew that lease, that's gonna be some ramifications that we don't want, or discrimination somebody may state. So let's list what can stop, or what can stop them from leasing this property.
Okay, I understand, I think I can do that.
Commissioner Mason.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There were certain facilities that we aren't currently using. Have we decided, or would that definitely be something that the board needs to take a look at and decide what we're gonna do with those facilities if they're no longer in use? What is your recommendation on how we can move forward with those particular facilities?
Yes, so, Mr. Sims and I haven't really discussed this, but my recommendation to you is if there are buildings, facilities, or even land that this county owns and has no use for, you look at disposing of them. There, there's simply no, no benefit to you owning a building that sits empty. And it might, while it may not cost you a lot of money, it does cost you something. And it would be my recommendation that if you are certain, if this board is certain that those properties have no further use to the county, and aren't otherwise beneficial to the county, we look at disposing of them. And they may not have much value, and I think there'll be a cost-benefit analysis we have to make, but I would recommend, at some point, an inventory of what does the county own, and do we, do we need it, do we want it? Should we put that property back into the marketplace, let it, let it become productive again? I think that's a decision the board should make.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, the, the intent, and I'm, I'm trying to, I'm thinking as I speak here, so the intent of, of these, the different community centers are very widely, from, I'm sorry, not their intent, but their use today. In terms of, say, Washington Street, educational-type backdrop for kids, after-school. Mansfield may be for more of a civic purpose. I think they have a, a, a seniors event each week, they have the city council meets there. So, so if another, if a, if an entity comes in, a third-party or nonprofit comes in, that does not include any of those current uses, that what the community's accustomed to, and in fact, what the cust, the community demands, how, if, disputes, how, how would they be settled? I mean, how will we determine what, which direction to go with?
So, what you don't have yet, because I haven't finished it, is the form lease agreement that we would give to the facility manager, the operator. That lease says, just like the, if you, if you rent a house, there's a section in that lease that says, "The property is rented for the following purposes." And in this draft, it says, "The property is rented for the purposes described on Exhibit A." And we spell out what those purposes are. So if it's a, if it's a facility that's, that's conducting senior services and square dances, we want them to list what they're, now, now, and we don't want it to be so detailed that they don't have flexibility to function. But we want them to tell us what they're doing, and that way, you, as a board, can make a rational decision when you're deciding who rents these facilities, is you are making sure that the community needs are being met. Maybe you need youth facilities in every one of them. Maybe you don't. I, I don't know, that's, that's what y'all were elected to do, right? But, but I do think it's appropriate that you know what the intention and what the operating parameters of that center are, and at the end of the year, and this would be one of the, one of the, one of the bases for non-renewal. If, if either those purposes are no longer a significant community need, or they're not achieving those purposes, that, that would allow you to evaluate those operators based on what they told you they're going to do. So I think each one of them should, or could, could very well have drastically different uses, and our documentation will allow for that, and ultimately, you make the decision. And we, the lease will prohibit them from engaging in activities other than what are authorized, but they're not gonna, we, I don't want them to be so strict that, you know, if, if it says, "We're gonna have a Friday ice cream event every Friday at 5:00," well, it turns out, it's, you know, everybody's on a diet, nobody wants ice cream, they want to come to do, you know, Pilates. I don't want it to be so, you know, maybe a Friday event, or weekend events for the, for seniors, or for the youth, or something like that. But I think that would be sort of the navigational beacon, they would keep it within, and so that you know, and you can, because ultimately, it's a public service being provided, and you can ensure that your communities are getting what they need.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You have anything, Jarvis? I mean, Mr. Sims?
I'll just add that I would like for all to know that we do value our existing relationship with our community partners, and this was just to provide some uniformity, as Patrick indicated, and making sure that we have lease agreements, we have ongoing inspections, quarterly inspections, to make sure our facilities are meeting the needs for the county, as well as Director Jason stated, as well as the community partners. So that's the purpose of the work session today.
So, Patrick and, you guys are gonna put together another draft and send out to the board? Mrs. Sims?
I'm gonna distribute my draft policy, if not tonight, first thing in the morning. And I would invite all of you, I've made some notes, my notes won't be incorporated yet, and I will distribute the, the, sort of the proposed lease agreement as quickly as it's completed, probably, probably Thursday. And, and then, after everybody's had a chance to digest it, maybe we'll bring another presentation back and let the board vote.
Okay. Commissioner Henderson.
I just have, I guess, some other comment. No, I'm just a firm believer that you, that you lead by an example. And one of the examples I think that we should lead by is that Gaithers Plantation, there shouldn't be no exception. If there's no alcoholic beverages in any county facility, then I think we should lead by making sure that there's none at Gaithers. And so, I don't see how we can do, I guess, a contract, that's a word probably wrong, use the words for a contract, of sort, for everybody else, and that, yet that be an exception. So I think that should be a part of, when the county leases it out, it should be the same. If we're gonna make, conform to everybody with it, then we should lead by that same example. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cowan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Patrick, given today's environment and everything, do we want to put something in there in regards to ideologies of certain groups? Things like the Antifa group, or Sons of Confederate Veterans, or...
So the reason we did not address that, is the minute you address that is when you've stepped into it.
No.
So, the, the decision of whether or not someone will be permitted to use a facility has to be made without regard to their, you know, what message they're sending. But if we limit it to entities that are performing a public service, or a public function, or a private familial, family-based thing, you're probably going to restrict most of that. But, I mean, look, we're a government forum, and those are, those are in the, in First Amendment speech, those are limited, public forum. And while we can restrict time, place, and manner, we cannot, we cannot in any ways restrict the thought or the speech. So it's, that's a slippery slope, and that's where, that's where we find ourselves in trouble.
I understand.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Henderson. Commissioner Hen, Commissioner Henderson.
It's, it's just, I guess it's just my last comment. So, I guess what I'm hearing, and you correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing, so, well, we can tell everybody else in a county facility, on county property, what to do, but we can't tell nobody at Gaithers, they can't serve alcohol there, but we can tell everybody else.
I, I'm not telling you you can't do that, no. This, this board sets policy for the county.
Absolutely. So, I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking, and it may be the board, if we're gonna make a policy for, for us all that's include Gaithers too as well, if we're not gonna include Gaithers, then just, I make a policy.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. I seek a motion that will adjourn, please.
Second.
This is a motion by Commissioner Henderson, and second by Commissioner Mason. Um, all in favor? Uh, we stand adjourned. Thank you. (applause)